...boys, practice as long as these guys do. Two and a half hours to three hours a day. That's no exaggeration. It could be ninety, it could be a hundred, and they still don't want to go home. I gotta lock the gate to get them off the field. That's, that's no exaggeration. And this team was, their actual record was forty-three and twelve. That was their record. They're eight years old. If you keep following these kids and they stay together, they're gonna be an amazing team that they already are. Um, you know, I'd just like to congratulate all of them. They did a great job. They're great kids to work with, and I'm looking forward already to next year. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight.
Councilman O'Brien, would you take the lead here?
The next person we'd like to recognize today is Alyssa Nair. Uh, if you're not a soccer fan, you probably don't know that she was the goalie for the World Cup US woman that won the World Cup championship, which is, is huge. It's one of the biggest things in sports. And she considers Stratford her hometown. I'll read a little bit about her. She was born in nineteen eighty-eight in Bridgeport, and they grew up in Lordship. At her first soccer practice when she was four years old, she was, she and her twin sister rushed out of the car, and Amanda, in her excitement, accidentally slammed Alyssa's hand in the door. It turned black and blue, her nails falling off. As Alyssa screamed in pain, Amanda consoled her and said, "Good thing you don't use your hands in soccer." This proved to be the most unprophetic, prophetic statement. Alyssa would go on to play the one position that does rely on your hands. Now Alyssa could not be here because she's playing soccer for Chicago in the, what is it, Kenny, the?
NWSL.
NWSL. And I think her mom mentioned she has three games this week. So her mom, Donna, and her father John are here. And Donna had sent me an email and said, "John and I bought our first home in Stratford and remain there to raise our girls almost through high school. I was in fact born in Lordship, and my parents built their first home and lived on Rygate Terrace for more than thirty years. We have many, many very happy memories created in Stratford, and all three of my girls would consider Stratford their hometown." She wanted to say that just today, when she sent me this, she's a Realtor, "I had an offer accepted for my buyer clients and their family, who are so excited to soon be calling the town of Stratford their first hometown too." So, there might be some people negative about Stratford at times, but there's a lot of people that have very high opinions about Stratford, as I do. And we'd like to call John and Donna to come forward.
Hi. Nice to meet you too. Thank you so much.
Anything you'd like to say about your family?
I just thank you very much, and Alyssa, it was a very exciting summer. As Tilla said, she definitely would consider Stratford her hometown. She travels an awful lot, but she loves going back to Zerri, Stratford. And I will say to all of your parents, get ready for a lot of weekend trips. A lot of practices and a lot of, lot of miles on the road.
But enjoy it because it goes way too fast. We still would love to watch our kids, and now we're looking forward to watching the next generation bring that up. So congratulations and good job parents, too.
So during the World Cup finals, our grandson was being born. And we were going back and forth with the raving room, watching the game, watching Alyssa make the saves. And so that's, I will always remember that JP was born while Alyssa was doing this.
Okay, so let me share, you brought this up. I'm gonna share one story exactly like that. In the two thousand fifteen World Cup, Alyssa was a backup keeper. And we couldn't go. It was in Canada, which would've been so much easier than France. But, um, our daughter, our youngest daughter, was expecting her first baby. She was due that week, so we came home the day of the final. My daughter went into labor, and the exact same thing. My son-in-law was turning the TV on and off in the heat of contractions, literally, and finally she said, "Just keep it on." And, and our first grandson was born on the final of the two thousand fifteen World Cup.
So, this is in recognition of Alyssa as a citation, and for her role in helping the United States Women's National Soccer Team with the, win the Women's World Cup title. Alyssa plays goalkeeper for both the national team and the Chicago Red Stars as a Stratford native. The residents of Stratford are very proud of her outstanding accomplishments and her also role as an outstanding basketball team.
Thank you so much.
I know you were here before.
Bob Mastroi.
Bob, did you want to give some words about, uh, the micro, at the microphone, give some words about the Old Timers Association, what's gonna happen tonight?
I'll get it for you. You can speak, I'll get it for you.
My name's Bob Mastroi, and I am the president of the Stratford Old Timers. We're an organization that's been in existence since nineteen sixty-six. And we are a charitable organization. We raise money for one purpose, and that is to give it away. We give money to organizations like Pop Warner and some of the other athletic teams in town, even to some of the high school programs have asked us for monies for special things. This year we gave out fourteen scholarships to Stratford youngsters, each one five hundred dollars. So we are finding things that we can do to support our community. And we have many great names that have come through our organization, and this plaque is a representation of those individuals that we've honored in the past. And this year, we have a number of others that we're including because, beside athletic endeavors, we look for people that contribute to the community. And two individuals that we're honoring this year are Tish Morrissey and Billy O'Brien, will be inducted this year. We're proud of them. So my feeling is, this plaque deserves to be in a place where everyone can see those individuals who we have, who have done so many wonderful things in this town. And I thank the council, and I thank you Ken, for having me come here today to present this. So thank you all. Can I get the guys from the organization to come down here, please?
Okay, we're gonna continue on now with the, the formal meeting. The first thing on the agenda is a resignation from Mr. Jerry Frederick Streets from the Library Association. It's just a information. Next thing, I'd like to turn it over to our mayor, and she's gonna give her a report.
Thank you, Chairman. So we've had a lot of things going on in Stratford. We had the recognition of the Mayor's Reading Champions. Over a hundred and eighty students read three thousand two hundred and eighteen books over the summer, and they were recognized at a celebration that included ice cream and entertainment. Uh, we received a federal cleanup grant for cleaning up the salt marshes, and that was announced in August. The funds are about seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And the party is responsible for polluting those areas, including the Remington Gun Club, Raymark Industries, and General Electric. We christened a new bus shelter on August twenty-third on Barnum near Bruce. We had the grand opening and ribbon cuttings of three thirty-five East Main, uh, three thirty-five Ferry Boulevard that called the Lofts. Approximately thirty-three percent of those are apartments are already rented. The school year began on the twenty-ninth, and I was honored to speak at the convocation on the twenty-seventh. Overdose Awareness Day was August thirtieth. Stratford Partnership for Youth and Families had an awareness campaign for the day, and actually for the week approaching the day. And I think the actual overdose awareness day was the thirty-first. And we have some online resources available besides two-on-one for the community. This past weekend, we held the first Stratford Arts and Cultural Festival. The town of Stratford, together with Stratford Forward, presented the arts and cultural festival set on the Shakespeare property. The Celebrate Stratford event was themed "Phoenix Season," art from the ashes. It started September sixth with Paradise Pizza sponsoring the Concert on the Green with the Alpaca Gnomes. And then it went through the eighth, uh, the Shakespeare property was transformed. Our own Javier Cologne was there to perform, and was really quite outstanding. Um, our own Arts Commission was a major supporter in more ways than one. They donated to Stratford Forward, but they also sponsored the sculpture that is on the grounds, and it's a beautiful thing to see. We have some updates about transportation. I-95, there are closures on September eleventh through October eleventh. These closures will be through, from Ferry Boulevard, exit thirty-three, through Millplains Road and Milford, exit thirty-five. One-ten alignment project is ongoing. Bear with us for a little bit while longer, it's gonna be a great thing when we finish. The roadway will be widened on both sides, and the work is currently progressing with the widening on the street, and while Sikorsky is changing their traffic pattern on their property. The West Broad Street project, as many of us have experienced when trying to get to Town Hall, is ongoing as well. This will add improved drainage sidewalks and a safer movement of traffic flow. So we have some upcoming events. I understand somebody wanted me to plug Roosevelt Forest, which I'm happy to do, but on the thirteenth first will be a ribbon cutting at Sebas Dos. That's at four o'clock. There's a Benel Field dedication. It seems to be Coach Mastroi Night. We're naming the field after Coach Mastroi, God willing, and recognizing the Wojnarzskis for their work on the field. And then Roosevelt Forest is having a movie night, so I'm assuming the Roosevelt Forest movie night starts at nine?
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty. So, you can go to Sebas Dos at four, you can go to the Benel Field at six. If you want to stay for a little while to see kickoff, you can do that too, because Benel has a football game. And then by seven-thirty, you can go up to Roosevelt, so you'll have a really busy day. Uh, the Connecticut Air and Space Center is having their annual Corsair Car Show fundraiser. That's eleven o'clock at the Stratford Army Engine Plant on the fifteenth. And Latin Music Festival was at Paradise Green, and that is celebrating Latin culture and showcasing performances of notable Latin bands and dance groups. And all the proceeds go to the scholarship fund. The Stratford Historical Society is now training individuals interested in becoming docents, sharing Stratford's unique colonial history with young students. Docent classes are the thirteenth and the twentieth of September, nine through eleven AM. Bonfire on the Beach, which is a fundraiser to support Swim Across the Sound, is September twenty-first, four to ten PM. It's a day of music, a day of fun. Um, it's a lot of food with food trucks, and this year, it's a mandatory ten-dollar donation to enter the park, to go to Bonfire. You can bring your cooler, you can bring your bathing suit if it's warm enough, and you can go swimming. Perry House fundraiser, for their fundraiser is October fifth at five o'clock. This again is the annual fundraiser that supports Perry House, the oldest house in Stratford. It's a seventy dollar, includes dinner, drinks, and entertainment. And the House of Bones will be providing barbecue.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, now, is there any questions for the mayor? Yes, Bill.
Laura, have we had any feedback on the simple recycling program?
We've had very, very positive feedback from the simple recycling program. So, a lot of people like the fact that things that they would normally throw in their garbage that would go into a landfill or to the burn plant are now able to be recycled. And, uh, and we're earning about forty dollars a ton in tipping fee revenue.
Chairman, um, Mr. Mayor? Just a question on Town Center and the RFP that we sent out in regards to. Just a short information on the status of the RFP in regards to Town Center.
So the RFP just went out on Friday, so there's not really too much to address. Or Thursday it went out. The redevelopment authority put out a request for RFQ, a request for qualifications. Three developers submitted. Those developers were all deemed appropriate for the RFP, so the RFP was sent out to them, and they are responding within the next few weeks. And then there'll be a series of interviews to conduct. They're very loud, the team. You can't close it, you can close one of them, if you don't mind.
Is there any other questions for the mayor? Mr. Kadim.
Thank you, through the chair. How are you, Your Honor? Good to see you. Missed you on vacation last month. Hope you guys are well. Just wanna say, keep, keep doing the good work you're doing, and I appreciate you and thank you.
If there's no other questions, we'll move on to, uh, four point three point one.
Hey, Jim?
Yes.
I had one, um, committee report we wanted to amend the agenda.
Yep.
Do we need to vote on that, or?
Make a motion.
A motion to add an item to the, a committee report.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion on a motion to add? If not, we'll call in favor.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think you should know what you're adding.
Yeah.
You have to amend it to do something. There should be a motion to amend the agenda by adding the following, and then what's being.
Bill, can you do that?
Oh, yes. A, um, a recommendation from the Parks and Rec Committee. Want me to read that now, or?
Yes.
Okay. Upon discussion at the September fifth meeting, I accept a motion as chairman of the Parks and Rec Committee by Mr. Hoedick to approve and send to the Town Council with a favorable recommendation, closing the golf course on November first, two thousand nineteen, so work on the irrigation system can be, can proceed without delay. Mr. Bowers second the motion, which passed unanimously.
So I'll still second my motion for amendment.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. O'Brien, second by Mr. Pia.
And to be clear, that's a motion to add that item to the.
Motion to add that item to the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, the motion passes, call to vote.
Well, you've got to.
No, we gotta add it to the.
Well, you've gotta have a vote on adding it to the.
Yeah, we gotta vote to add it to the, okay. Motion to add, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero. Now, Mr. O'Brien, can you make a motion?
So I, I'll make a motion that the council approves the closing of the golf course on November first, two thousand nineteen, so work on the irrigation system can proceed without delay, and hopefully get the project finished by the spring.
This motion is your second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gregg. Yeah, any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, now, four point three point one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item four point three point one.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiki. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, just wanna add in, this has been a, a really great opportunity for the town over the last couple of years. Uh, the committee's done extensive work on rewriting this entire ordinance from top to bottom. Um, I've told a lot of people, if, if you want to see exactly what the committee's done, just try to read the current existing ordinance. Um, it might take you some time, so you'll, and then compare and contrast the two. Uh, but a lot of work has been put into this. The only thing, Mr. Leclerc, if I can just get clarity on one question that was just raised to me, and I promised to bring it up. Um, on page six of the, the first page of the tax incentive program, um, item number one ninety-one dash ten, eligibility and guidelines, under the establishments, number three, can we just, I know we've discussed this at length, but can you just further clarify that item?
Yes, Mr. Pia. When this was discussed at committee, uh, the intention of this was to include as an eligible improvement, uh, buildings, establishments with a minimum of twenty-five units, um, and providing housing and other transient guest services, basically the hotel and motel. Uh, it requires minimum twenty-five units and transient guest services and housing.
Okay, and I do remember that, so.
It's not an apartment house.
It's not apartment, which is what we were going against.
No.
Okay, thank you for that.
Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll call to vote.
Oh.
Just a question, has this ordinance been revised since the ordinance?
Has not. These are revisions, line, red, redlined revisions from ordinance. Mr. Flurk, I believe could attest to that.
Yes, no changes have been made since that time.
Thank you, Attorney Flurk. And just a, a comment that we have a tax abatement program now, that as Chris mentioned is hard to read and hard to administer. The town needs commercial investment. So while people who meet the criteria and make investments in the town do get a tax abatement, or they possibly get a tax abatement, that's for a limited period of time with the thought that they'll be here for longer, and that they'll attract employees that will visit our stores and restaurants, and that they will become productive tax-paying enterprises. So it's, it's a competitive move for the town to be, uh, more commercially viable. Thank you.
Is there any other comments before we call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes eight-zero. Uh, let me back up. Ms. Attorneys, do I have to make a roll call vote on ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, okay. Uh, back up, uh, roll call votes, starting with Mr. Pia.
Aye.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes eight-zero. Next, Building Needs Committee, Mr. Poisson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items four point three point two point one and four point three point two point two, which came with favorable recommendations from the Building Needs Committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiki. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes eight-zero. Four point three point three.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to pass, uh, four point three point three.
Motion by Mr. Tiki, seconded by Mr. Poisson. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to, oh, Mr. Gregg.
It's just a, a change order for the roadway design to give exception of Stratford and other spot avenues.
Okay, thank you. Any other quick comments, or call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes eight-zero. Town Attorney, Mr. Chris Hodson.
Thank you. We only have the executive session, matter?
Yes, um, we're gonna break to executive session, and we're gonna need.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion to, uh, enter into executive session to discuss the purchase of five-twenty Sniffens Lane, as publicity regarding the site and purchase of the town, uh, would likely adversely impact the price of such a site. The persons in attendance for the executive session shall be the members of the Town Council, Town Attorney.